Good day and welcome to this preview meeting regarding the 2020 Abington Annual Town Meeting. My name is Sean Riley. I'm the Town Moderator. Cities and towns across Massachusetts are dealing with the issue of how to safely and efficiently hold a town meeting during a national public health emergency. There is a need to keep the wheels of government moving forward so that our residents can continue to receive vital public services, but there's also a duty for each town to minimize any risks and protect the health of its citizens who attend the town meeting during the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. This show is going to have two parts. First, we'll review the new protocols which will be put in place during our town meeting, which is going to be held on Monday, June 22, 7:00 PM at the Abington High School Auditorium. Second, we'll then review the actual articles that will appear on the town meeting warrants, which is the agenda of issues that will be discussed and voted upon that night. I'm very pleased to have with me during this show three gentlemen who have been intimately involved and behind the scenes getting everything organized and ready for our town meeting. First up, I'd like to introduce and welcome our new Town Manager, Mr. Scott Lambac. Hi, Scott.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me.
Good morning, Scott. Also, we have our Health Agent Marty Go Lightly. Good morning.
Hello, everyone.
And finally, a Chairman of the Finance Committee, Matt Sala. Hello, Matt.
Good morning. Welcome, everyone.
Well, these gentlemen with a lot of other people have been working hard to kind of get this all organized and ready to go on June 22. I've received a number of calls from residents who are longtime voters who regularly take part in the town meeting, and they've expressed a concern that they want to attend the town meeting, but they need assurances that their health will be protected. Some of you have private health concerns of your own, and some of you have loved ones at home that won't, you don't want to endanger by bringing the virus back home with you from town meeting. So we're going to do everything possible to welcome everyone to town meeting and to limit your risks as much as possible. I want to start off by thanking everyone who has been coordinating their efforts. As I mentioned, Scott Lambac, our Town Manager, of course Marty from the Board of Health, our Town Clerk Lee Ann Adams has been wonderful. The School Custodial Director Jamie Hoy has been just tremendous. Fire Chief John Notall, Police Chief Dave Majenski. A lot of people have been working behind the scenes to make this a very efficient, very safe town meeting. Our shared goals are to limit the risk of exposure among people seated within an enclosed area such as an auditorium. As in any other business or government environment, we have to protect everyone in attendance by assuming that some people who arrive may unknowingly be contagious and by assuming that some people in the auditorium may have higher health risks if they are exposed to COVID-19, or if they could put other family members at risk again if they brought the virus home with them. So the two most effective means that we know of lowering the spread of the virus, especially when used together, are number one, maintaining social distancing before, during, and after the town meeting to lower the risk of exposure. And then number two, to minimize the amount of time that people will be expected to either remain in line during the voter check-in procedure or during the actual town meeting itself. Some things are not changing for this upcoming town meeting. Again, it will be held in the auditorium at the Middle High School. It will start at 7:00 PM as we always do. Check-in will be in the lobby, the lobby right outside the gym in the auditorium entrance. We did consider having an outdoor town meeting, as some other towns are doing, but due to the uncertainties about weather and crowd sizes and other factors, we've concluded that a socially-distanced town meeting in our air-conditioned auditorium with the available sound system and technology would be the better way to go. And some people have asked also, why don't we hold a virtual town meeting, much like we're doing now on Zoom? Well, it's illegal to have an open town meeting on Zoom or virtual town meeting. You can do it in a representative town meeting that some larger cities and towns have, but Abington, like many small towns in the South Shore, is an open town meeting. So with that being said, I mean, Scott, if you can update us from what's going on from the town offices side of the equation.
Yep, all of our warrants have been posted online at www.abbingtonmass.gov. They're also available at the post office, the Town Clerk's office. We're urging residents to review the warrant in advance of town meeting. We really want you to get familiar with it because, again, our goal is just to get you in and go about business in a timely manner and get everybody out, so just to minimize our, any risks. The state has prohibited, as you know, social gatherings over 10 people, but there is a specific exemption for town meetings. We need to make sure that we can operate. We need to go forward and we need to keep providing services to the citizens of Abington. Under some new emergency statewide legislation that was enacted in June, the Board of Selectmen voted to temporarily reduce the quorum number required to start a town meeting. So we've reduced, the quorum number was reduced to 50. We'll now be able to start the town meeting pretty much right on time. We'll wait till everybody gets in their seat, but by all means, this isn't mean, doesn't mean that if you show up, we're not going to let you in. If more than 50 people come, more than 50 people will be welcome in. We are, you know, as Sean said, we do have our plan as far as how we're going to see people and socially distant people. So, you know, it'll take a little longer, but we're going to start as soon as we have 50 in there. And that's, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you very much. And Marty, if you could, on behalf of the Board of Health, kind of give us an update on what type of health and safety protocols we'll try to be implementing for our town meeting?
Okay, thank you very much. I want to start off by saying this is all contingent upon the continued decreasing trend of COVID-19 hospitalizations, hospital, positive test cases, and no upticks in cases before town meeting. So just bear in mind that everything we're doing right now, safety precautions-wise, is contingent upon our continued downward trend. And so one of the things that's going to be a little different is the entryway is the closer to the parking lot this year than it is the large four sets of doors. And that's to facilitate people walking in that door and being able to, if there's a line, line up safely down to one hallway that we can clean afterwards. And there'll be markings on the floor every six feet so people can still socially distance. It's, uh, it's door number 18, just before the main entrance of the gym. So you're going to come in, there's a little park there, and then you'll line up there. And there'll be members of the Board of Health, myself, and volunteers walking around encouraging people to socially distance and doing that kind of thing. The registration line will be where it is normally inside the building, so just make sure that you're, if you're with your family unit, you know, obviously you stay together, but try to maintain that six feet of social distance between you and any other group or any other person. We're asking everyone, of course, to wear a mask. If you don't have a mask when you come, look for me or look for some of the other members of the Board of Health. We'll have extra masks for you. We'll have hand sanitizer on the tables for everybody to use, and you'll be handed, when you're handed your town warrant, you can use the hand sanitizer before or after. School doors, we're not going to open the doors until 6:30. So if you get there early, you know, please make good decisions, stay in your cars or make sure that you're maintaining that six feet of social distance between you and somebody else. If you have to use the restroom, the restrooms will be available. We'll have somebody there cleaning before and after. And mentioning cleaning, the auditorium will be thoroughly cleaned before the town meeting happens, so don't worry about that. And if you have a temperature or if you've been recently exposed to someone who has COVID-19, please consider not coming. You're putting others at risk if you do, and we're asking you politely as possible, if you have a fever, if you're not feeling well, stay home. And you also might want to stay home if you're in a higher-risk category. Those people that have pre-existing conditions, I understand you may want to come and want to get your voice heard, but you might want to find a different way to do that this year because you could be potentially more at risk, and we want to make sure that you are not as best we can. Your health, safety, and wellness is our top priority, has been since this started. So please understand that if we're asking anyone to stay home, it is just an abundance of caution. I think that covered it. Did I miss anything? Any, uh?
I don't think so. We'll continue to work with your Board of Health to update any sort of procedures and protocols to make sure that people are safe and that we can move the line very quickly. And to that end, I can give you some updated information from the Town Clerk Lee Ann Adams. To move the line, you'll have four or five or six people that you can check in. And instead of checking in by precinct that we've done in years past, we had to wait for your line to open up. Every checker is going to have the entire voting list available, so you can go to any person at the check-in desk when you arrive. So that should help the line move, and we'll have ushers to help move you, move the line right along. So that will be very helpful. And as Marty mentioned, as you, after you check in and you enter the auditorium, we will hand you a warrant article. We're not going to put them in a stack on a desk or a table where people will be, multiple people grabbing it, we'll hand you your own warrant. Once in the auditorium, ushers will be there to help you find a seat. This is important. Now, to utilize our required social distancing guidelines, voters are going to be required to keep three vacant seats between each other and at least two rows between occupied rows. Now, members of the same household, not only can they stand in line together, they can also sit together. So a husband and wife can sit together, or a mother-daughter can sit together. If you're in that category, just let one of the ushers know that you'd like to find a place where you can find two seats that are still three seats away from someone else. We will be reserving some of the seats up front of the auditorium for the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. As you know, they normally sit up front anyhow. We're going to have the Town Manager, Town Council, some of the department heads. So those seats will pretty much be already kind of cordoned off, and we'll fill in the rest of the auditorium as we go. Masks, as we said, must be worn in the auditorium. Oh, and I should mention, in addition to all the Finance Committee and the Selectmen and some of the department heads, when you spread out people in the manner we're talking about with three vacant seats and two vacant rows, we should be able to fit about 70 to 75 additional voters in the auditorium. If we do have an overflow, those voters will be going into the gymnasium, and the gymnasium will have an audiovisual connection. We kind of utilized this years, a couple of years ago when we had a school vote. So there will be plenty of seats for everyone if you'd like to attend. Once again, masks must be worn, basically as you approach the building, as you enter the building. One thing we have to do differently, instead of sharing a microphone at the end of the aisle on a stand, we are going to bring the microphone to you if you'd like to stand. Once you're seated, we need to ask that you stay in your seat. You can't have people walking up and down rows because then you're violating the six-foot rule. So we will have ushers with wireless microphones. If you have a question, you can raise your hand. When I recognize you, an usher will come over and bring a microphone to you. The microphone will be disinfected both before and after you use that microphone. And then at the end of the town meeting, in order to avoid any crowding at exits and people getting too close to each other, we are going to ask that we dismiss people in sections, and we'll have one section go out the left-hand exit door, one section go out the right-hand exit door. And as that crowd clears, we're going to have another section leave, so we're asking for your cooperation in that regard. And again, the ushers will be there to help you. We ask that you continue right out the building to not have any conversations in the hallway. If you'd like to, of course, socialize, we just ask that you do that out in the parking lot. And one other big thing I want to thank Kevin Tachi from Abington Cam, Rich Baikowski from Abington High School, our IT man. This is going to be shown live on television. So if you don't feel comfortable coming to the town, town meeting, or simply just can't come, it will be live on Verizon Channel 24 and on Comcast Channel 15, 7 o'clock on Monday the 22nd, and of course, we'll replay it later that week. So our goal is to check in voters as efficiently as possible in order to shorten the time you spend in line, to then seat you safely with social distancing guidelines as soon as possible, and then to start the town meeting promptly at 7 o'clock or very soon after. As soon as we have at least 50 voters, we'll be able to start with that reduced quorum. Towns across the state have also reduced the number of articles on their town meeting warrant in an effort to shorten the length of town meetings wherever possible, and Abington has done that also. So I think we'll have a very efficient town meeting for you and a very important town meeting. Scott, you had some updates regarding the town elections?
Yep, that's correct. Town elections will be held the very next day, so they're going to be Tuesday, June 23rd. Doors are going to open at 8:00 AM and close at 6:00 PM. This year, it's going to be at the Emerald Hall. It will not be at the high school. And again, it's a lot of the same things that are, you'll see when you come into town meeting, you're going to see when you go to the elections. We're going to be requiring masks, so when people enter, we pray that you wear a mask. Again, if you don't have one, we'll try and make them available for you, and there'll be hand sanitizers. When you go to check in, you'll see the check-in registrars are going to be behind Plexiglas to protect them and to protect you. In the meantime, if you would feel more comfortable, you can get an absentee ballot at the Town Clerk's office. You can come in here, you can come see the Town Clerk, you can get the ballot, you can fill it out and leave it with them. And if you have any questions whatsoever, just please call the Town Clerk. The office number is 781-982-2112.
That's great. Thank you. So again, town meeting was on Monday night, June 22 at 7:00 at the high school. Town elections are on the next day, Tuesday, at Emerald Hall from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And absentee ballots are available right up to the day before the election. Basically, go to the Town Clerk's office, it'd be the quickest, easiest way you can fill out the form, they'll give you the ballot, you fill out the ballot and give them back the ballot. So any other information, questions about our protocols before we move on to the warrant? Good? So at this point, I'd like to kind of turn the show over to Finance Committee Chairman Matt Sala and our Town Manager, Scott Lambac. We have a three, we have a special town meeting to start tonight at 7:00, which is just three articles, some housekeeping articles. And then we have an annual town meeting that immediately follows with 25 articles. These guys are going to go over them to give it, kind of give you a review. And as Scott mentioned earlier, copies of these warrants are available on the town website, www.abbingtonma.gov. There's also paper copies available at the Town Clerk's office or at some of the local post offices. So it would be nice if you could review them ahead of time, but we will have paper copies also available the night of town meeting. So Scott and Matt, I'll leave it to you to go through the warrant articles.
Thank you. I think I'd like to just start off, and then I think I would turn it over to Matt, but just to say that these are very challenging times that we've come into, financially uncertain times. There's been a lot of work in just the short time that I've been here by a lot of people here at Town Hall, and it's been quite a, volunteers in the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the employees within Town Hall, the department heads and everybody really working hard to come up with a budget and make a budget that's, you know, very, in my opinion, very fiscally responsible. We, given the uncertain times that are ahead of us, we are being very careful. There is a spending freeze that is in effect right now, so many of these articles that do have spending in them, well, we won't actually be spending that money, perhaps not till after the first of the year, or certainly until we're certain that the, you know, our economic times are a little more stable. There's also a hiring freeze in effect right now. And again, unless it's something that we absolutely need to continue our operations and to continue services, we don't intend to lift that hiring freeze anytime soon. However, many of these items in here are what we absolutely need to continue giving the services that we need to give to the town. So with that, I'm going to let Matt start off. As I said, there was quite a bit of work done before I got here. And a lot of that work was done by Matt and the Finance Committee.
And there's our first case of being muted on Zoom and trying to talk. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for watching. Thank you for taking the time to get acquainted and get informed on what you'll be voting on when you arrive at town meeting. As Sean mentioned, we do have a short special town meeting, and that is to wrap up the business of the current FY '20 fiscal year so that we can move ahead. The fiscal year that starts, the fiscal year for the town goes from July 1st to June 30th each year. So we need to wrap up things on this fiscal year and make sure that the town's books are balanced first. So the special town meeting is very quick. There are three articles, as Sean mentioned, and I'll just quickly explain what those three articles are. The first article is a relatively small article paying out sick leave buyback for a library employee who is retiring. And this is a contractual item that you'll, if you're familiar with our town meetings, you see things like this pretty much every year on the special town meetings. So it's a fairly straightforward one. There's an employee retiring, it's about $7,000 worth of sick time that the town has to pay out contractually to that employee. The second article is another one that we do every single year, which is snow and ice removal, snow and ice in the budget. It's very hard to predict how much it's going to snow and how much we're going to need to pay to remove the snow. So that's something that we always settle up at the end of the year. This year is a relatively light winter for snow, thankfully. So we have a relatively small amount to pay off this year. For those of you who are around in the winter of 2015, know that it can be far, far worse than this. And then the third item is putting money into stabilization. And this is one that the amount of it fluctuates every year, but in some years, we've unfortunately had to skip on putting money into stabilization. But this time, the time of great economic uncertainty is the time that we are putting, that we put money aside into our essentially rainy day fund for. So the goal from the Finance Committee and the Town Manager's office throughout the budget process that we've been working on has been to put as much money into the stabilization account right now as we possibly can, expecting that there is the great possibility that we will need to use this either through the coming fiscal year or looking into next year's, next year's budget. We're trying as best we can to avoid having to lay off town employees and impact the services that are provided to the towns. We're trying to put as much money away as we can. The amount that we're putting in this year is approximately 1.1 million, which will bring the stabilization account to over $3 million, which will be available for us in a special town meeting throughout the year if one is held, if we need to go in because the, we're not going to make ends meet for the budget, which we'll get into very, very shortly. That's it. That's it for the special town meeting.
If I could just add, the question comes up, what is the stabilization fund? And you kind of mentioned it briefly. It's basically the town savings account.
Yep.
We can dip into if we have to and when we do. And there has been a lot of discussion amongst the financial offices, Finance Committee, and the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen that it's very likely that you're going to see almost every town around here having a fall town meeting to try to tweak their budgets because we don't know exactly what the state aid numbers are going to be because the state's having the financial problems that the towns are having. We don't know when that special town meeting could be. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the fall. It could be in the spring of 2021. But the Finance Committee and the Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen have been working along with the Town Accountant who's been doing yeoman's work to try to present a really solid budget for the town moving forward. So we will continue, I'm sure they'll continue to keep their eyes on the ball as we move forward. So we'll move to the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Sean, and absolutely, it is, it is the town savings. It's our rainy day fund, and I don't know if anybody's looked outside, but financially, it's certainly raining out. So we're trying to make sure that's as stable as it can be and as stocked as it can be. So moving to the annual town meeting, the first item is the budget. And the budget, I want to give people a little bit of history on this year's budget because this has been unlike any year that I've been involved in either going to town meeting or being on the Finance Committee. We were in the process of putting together the budget, meeting with all the departments, figuring out what the needs of the town were and projecting out where the economy would be and where the town's income would be, and going through our normal process. And we were just about at the end of that and had just about balanced the projected budget when the lockdown for COVID-19 hit and the economy started to drastically change. The outlook changed significantly, and the state pulled back pretty much everything that they were doing and put a pause on things. And to this day, we still don't know what the state's budget is going to be. The state's budget and specifically local aid from the state, state money that comes to the municipalities and the state cities and towns is a major factor in Abington's budget. It's not, not the entirety of the budget by any stretch, but it is a large portion of our income as a town. So not knowing what that number will be, we're, we've been having to reevaluate what we projected as the budget that in early March we were almost set on. And we've looked at what has happened in prior times of economic downturn. We looked at the 2008, 2009 timeframe and looked at what happened with state aid in that timeframe. We looked at other dipping points, the 2000.com time, and tried to project what we thought would be, hopefully, a worst-case scenario for what our state aid would be. And we projected approximately a 10% decrease in state aid and went back into the budget, which was fairly lean to begin with. It was increasing a few positions here and there. There was some expected additional money from the state for the school department that we now expect to not receive, but there were going to be positions added to that. Those positions will now not be added. We were looking at the potential of adding a position of a town planner, which will also not be added. DPW was looking to add an employee who will also not be added. And we looked at a variety of other areas where we could adjust and bring things in line with what we expect to be the financial picture as we move ahead into the coming year. We did not want to take, we wanted to take measures that were realistic. We wanted to try to line things up in a way where if, if the economy continues the way that it has been going over the last few months, we were able to adjust for that. And if it bounces back, we're able to put things back in and provide additional services for the town, provide the services we were expecting to before this all started. So we did prioritize things. The Town Manager, the previous Town Manager, the Town Accountant, and all the financial officers in the town did massive, massive amounts of work to try to tighten budgets and provide areas where the budgets could be cut without a significant impact to the residents of the town. So I really thank them and the department heads for all of the work that they've done to get the budget to where it is. And where it is, is a projected balanced budget with, with a, essentially, as Scott mentioned, a hiring freeze and a spending freeze where even what's in, what's in the budget and positions that are in the budget will not be filled unless, or filled or spent unless we have a better idea of the economic picture of the town's finances. So we're looking to project out a budget, but also to be extra cautious with actually spending, and that goes for the capital plan, which is number three on the article, which we'll get to as well. And I'm definitely talking far too much at this point, so I'm going to turn things over to Scott to add just a tiny bit before we move to the next article.
No, that was excellent, excellent summation on how we got to this point. It was a lot of work. It was quite a bit of iterations and going back to all the department heads. I think I will defer in however you'd like to format this, going through this Article 1. I don't know if you'd like me to read through some of the totals or?
No. No, I think, I think for the purposes of this, if you go on to where Scott had mentioned, Scott and Sean had mentioned before, where the warrant is posted, you can look through. We have a printout with some of the numbers comparing this year and last year and the numbers that, the numbers where, sorry, excuse me, just scrolling up to get the right wording, the numbers where we started the budget process, where the Town Manager came in and then where the Finance Committee got to, to look at individual departments, individual numbers if you, if you want. Obviously, if you have any questions, please reach out. You can reach out to any of us through the town website. And let us know if there, if there are questions on any of the specific, but I think for the purposes of this, this presentation, I don't think we need to read through each, each of the departments and each of the lines.
And as is traditional in our town meeting, we will be asked to vote the Finance Committee's recommended budget. And as is traditional in our town meeting, we will be asked to vote the Finance Committee's recommended budget, which in this case also matches the Town Manager's recommended budget. So we will be going forward with a unified budget. And again, thank you, all of you for the work you did in basically finishing a budget and then redoing it and finishing it again. So thank you.
Article two. So and so just very quickly, obviously, the Finance Committee's recommendation is to approve the budget. Article two, Article two is a something that was worked out between the school department and the Town Manager's Office in looking at the budget, and this is one of the changes that came in. The special special education budget is something that varies greatly from year to year. But the school department typically knows by, I believe it's October 1st, what their what their overall number for special education is. There there are rules that the state has set up where towns pay for the special education needs of its residents, whether they're in the school or placed in other facilities. And it's based on the residency within the town as of October 1st. And so if the if if we pass the budget on June 22nd and several families move in with students with special education needs after town meeting, there's there's additional strain that's put on the school's budget due to that. So as a workaround for this current year with the current climate, the school agreed to move $100,000 out of their regular budget to move it into this spot so that it it provides more flexibility to the town in case, in case they receive more students and have a higher special education budget that they need to fill, we'll be able to pay it out of this. If they don't, the money will go back to the the general fund for the town.
And I don't know if $100,000 to be set aside from sort of my free cash. As just moving forward, if you're looking at the warrant, which again is available online, some of the articles will exact will say what the dollar amount is and where the money's coming from. For the articles that don't have the source, that means Matt will be reading off that in the form of a motion. So for example, in in Article One, the budget, there are, there's a list of funding sources, real estate taxes, revenues, transfers from other accounts. That will be provided to you at at town meeting via the Finance Committee. So starting to drop once again.
No, that's all right. And for those who are not familiar with the concept of certified free cash, certified free cash is essentially the money, the money that the town had in the budget from last year that was not spent and that the state certifies and and gives back to the town to be able to use. It's typically used for things like paying off snow and ice, as was seen in the special town meeting for something like this and for capital projects, which we'll get to now in Article Three. So Article Three is the capital plan. If you are looking along, you'll notice that there there are approximately seven, I think, seven items that are have a funding source of free cash. There are police cruisers. There's a deputy fire chief's car. The Board of Health needs replacement trash and recycling bins, fire alarms and for the town office and library, a drive-through window repair permitting, and then waste oil furnace for the Department of Public Works. There are then a handful of items for the water department that come from the water department's funds and the the water department fees. Same for the sewer and same for the golf department. What we need you to know for this year for the capital plan is that we essentially took an axe to it. We we mentioned the stabilization money in in the special town meeting. We wanted to put as much money as we could into stabilization. We also wanted to put as much money as we take some of the money and put it into the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund, which is another form of flexibility where if there are smaller amounts that can that need to be paid that are unexpected charges throughout the year, unexpected costs throughout the year, they can be presented to this to the Finance Committee as a request from one of the departments to is essentially go over budget in a certain area because of unexpected costs. We're trying to make the, we're trying to give the town as much flexibility as we can for the coming year because of the uncertainty of the economic picture. So we took a lot of items out of the capital plan. And then each of the items that are in the capital plan, if anyone has been watching the Finance Committee meeting recordings, you'll know that we went over each item in great detail to try to determine the absolute need of the of the item and if it was something that was needed this year or if it could wait. And the things that are in there are the things that were needed for this year. And even knowing that those those things, as Scott mentioned, we are, we are we have a spending freeze. We're not going to purchase them if we don't think that we're going to have monies to cover them. So trying to be very cautious and trying to be very careful with the the town payers money. With that, with what is left in there, the Finance Committee does does recommend approving the capital plan. Scott or Sean, I don't know if you had any comments on that one.
Now, just as you said, you know, we we spent a lot of time and 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 looking hard at pairing this down as much as possible, knowing that even the things that we did take out of it, it's not that we didn't need them. And it's not that we won't have to take care of them because they will, you know, they will come back and it's important to take care of our buildings and and our, you know, our our vehicles and and everything else like that. So even if we did put it off, we may see it next year or certainly the year after. But these things tend to accumulate, so that's why we wanted to keep the items on here that we did keep on here because if it's at all possible, we want to make sure that we're keeping up as best we can with our with our equipment in our buildings.
Thanks, Scott. And I will, I will say for those watching along that we've now gotten through the really big items where we need to do do a lot of explaining or discussing. Most of the rest of of the items, we should be able to go fairly quickly through, starting with a revolving fund for the town clerk, which is Article Number Four. I'm going to let Scott touch on this one.
Yeah, that quite simply is public records requests come into this office or come to through the town clerk's office quite often. We are allowed to recover some of the money that's involved with doing the research and the copying and and putting together the information and then providing it. And basically, so we recover those costs. But in order for us to sort of initialize it and start it and and go into it, we we want, you know, to have some money allocated for us to be able to do these things. And then again, we we collect, you know, collect the money as it comes in. So it is just a basic revolving fund.
And the Finance Committee does approve, recommend approval of that article. The next article, Article Number Five, is the Community Preservation Committee's Budget for the Coming Year. As those familiar know, the Community Preservation Act was something that the town adopted several years back, I think about five years ago, where there is a certain percentage of of your taxes that are set aside for community preservation and there are matching funds, percentage of matching funds that come from the state through the Registry of Deeds through that the committee is allowed to use in specific areas, open spaces, senior housing, things, things that better the community. And this is their their budget for the coming year. They have to put it through to town meeting to be voted on, and we do recommend approval of that budget. The next article, Article Number Six, is one that I touched on when we were talking about the capital. This is a adding money to the Reserve Fund for the Finance Committee. We do in the budget have $59,000 in the budget for the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund, which is up a a little bit from previous years, as we talked about wanting that wanting the flexibility to be able to handle things as as they come up during the year. The the amount that's being added in here, the $90,000 are items that we removed from the capital plan through the budget process after the first wave of removing things from the capital plan. So the first wave, we took a chunk of a large chunk of items out of the capital plan and that money was put to stabilization. And then as the Finance Committee went on and discussed additional items being removed from the capital plan, the money was set to to this purpose to try to be, try and add flexibility in two different directions for the town. And we are recommending approval of that.
Yes, and again, you know, this budget was pared down to essentials. And with I'm going to say the essentials, it's it's basically our operating budget and things that we actually absolutely had to take care of. Our hope and I thought it would be to take care of other items that we normally would take care of at the town meeting, at the annual town meeting, at a special town meeting thing, meaning items such as a planning, planning board articles, zoning articles and street acceptances. My other, my concern with it is, is that if for some reason we are still not able to have a full special town meeting because of a COVID-related incidence, we we would want to have the ability to go to the Finance Committee and take care of any small items or 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 things that bills that we have to take care of that can't be, can't wait for our town meeting.
Thank you, Scott. The next three items, Articles Seven, Eight and Nine, are items that we see in the in the warrant every year and are looking to have the town approve in one fell swoop of a vote to try to help to minimize the time that people have to be at town meeting and to try to to make best use of your time and provide the least amount of exposure, as was discussed earlier in this presentation. The three articles are for out-of-district transportation for students. It's for students that go live in Abington but go to schools that provide programs that the Abington Schools or South Shore Botec do not provide. Norfolk Aggie is is the typical school that that is is on here. And this is just to pay for the transportation, which the town is required to do. The second article is a yearly article that we have for to provide funding to health imperatives, which is a domestic violence service that is provided to Abington residents. And then the third one is for Ark of the South Shore, which is another one that we see yearly, which is services provided to Abington residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. These are articles that we see every year and and are generally very well, very easily approved at town meeting because they're they're very important things for the for the town residents. So we recommend approval of all of them.
And if I could just interject, when you look at the warrant, you'll see them set off as under the title of Consent Agenda, which is just a phrase we use when we try to combine a few articles for a single vote procedurally to move the meeting along. So as Matt said, Seven, Eight and Nine, which are 14,000, 5,000 and $2,500 articles that appear every year, will take one vote to approve those three articles. We have a second Consent Agenda vote at the very end of town meeting, which we'll get into. But again, we're doing everything we can to move the meeting along so that we won't, will minimize the time that we have to spend together in the auditorium, at least for this year.
Thanks again, Sean. The next article, Article 10, was to intended to provide, is it? I'm trying to remember if it's repairs or replacement of the Central Street Bridge. It was.
Rehabilitation.
Yep. So design, reconstruct and rehabilitate the Central Street Bridge. This is something that has been on the agenda for the Department of Public Works for several years. But based on the current economic climate, it was determined by the DPW chief that this is not something that is needed for this particular year. So the Finance Committee is recommending to pass over this article and not not enact it for this year. Articles 11 is a sewer main replacement. And this is a sewer main that, as if you're looking at the article and see a cost of almost $6.8 million, you'll you'll think, is this the time to be spending $6.8 million on on a sewer main replacement? Unfortunately, yes, it is. We've the the sewer main in question is, I believe it's about two miles long and it has sprung leaks at different points throughout throughout this current year that have cost a significant amount of money to to repair and to repair the damage from. And so the 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 wise fiscal move at this time is in fact to replace this. And as you can see from the the article, there is the the funding for this would be from borrowing. It's not not something that lists from free cash. We'll talk about this in the motion itself for it. Thankfully, borrowing rates are very, very low right now. So the the timing of that works well, but the timing of our sewer main breaking down and and weakening is not not ideal. But it is very old sewer main and will be replaced with something that will last the town for a very, very, very long time to come. Article 12 is an article for school security. It's doors and cameras for the Woodsdale and Beaverbrook Schools. And this is another one that the Finance Committee deems something very, very important for our schools right now and and important to to do. This will be another borrowing article. As will the next two items, Items 13 and four, Articles 13 and 14. 13 being the siding for the police station. Unfortunately, the siding that was put on the police station when it was built has started to really peel off and to to it is in very poor disrepair. Unfortunately, the warranty is expired and we have not been able to make any headway in getting the original installer and to provide us some assistance in repairing that. So the siding for the building does need to be replaced to maintain the the structural integrity of the building and make sure that it doesn't leak and there's no water damage. And we are still working, the Town Manager and the Finance Committee are working on the side to try to reduce this. The cost that's listed on here will be an up to cost, not necessarily the entire cost. And Article Number 14 is another article for maintenance of town property. And this one is repairs for three of the town's fire engines. There are there are parts of the each of the three older fire engines in the town, not obviously not the two newest, but the the other three, where there are safety concerns or concerns about the the overall wear and tear for the for the machine that that if we don't take care of them now, could either endanger our firefighters, things like steps that they go on to climb up onto the onto the apparatus that are are pulling away from the the frame of the the vehicle or places where the vehicle is is rusting and it can could potentially damage the integrity of the of the chassis, of the frame of the of the vehicle. There are things that we want to take care of right away and make sure that these vehicles stay in use for many years to come so that we don't have to come back and purchase another fire engine on the sewer side.
If I if I could just add, if you don't have the warrant in front of you, that that Article 14 for $160,000 would make repairs to the engines that are, one is from 1996, one is from 2002 and one is from 2007. So we're basically a 13-year-old, an 18-year-old, a 24-year-old engine that they're trying to get a few more years of life out of. And one other point, a question that become before is Articles 10 through 14, why weren't those articles included in the capital plan? And the reason is because Articles 10 through 14, the proposal was to fund these projects by borrowing money over a number of years. Whereas the capital plan in Article Three is to purchase them or pay for them outright in the coming year. So that was the difference. And that's why these articles to to update the security at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale, to fix the police station and fix the fire engines. to, uh, fix the police station and fix the fire engines and to fix the sewer lines is all going to be based on borrowing and Matt will be making a motion with the detailed language that's required by the town's attorneys for each of those borrowing articles.
One point. Thank you, Sean, for, for, uh, bringing that up. Uh, article fifteen is one that, uh, again, if you watched the finance committee meetings, you saw that there was great debate over this article, uh, but it is, uh, to purchase equipment for, uh, Griffin's Dairy for the Griffin's Dairy, uh, committee to, uh, keep up the Griffin's Dairy properties primarily to purchase a uh, riding tractor to, to mow the lawns at Griffin's Dairy. Uh, and that's, uh, five thousand dollars there. Um, and that again, um, that will be from the actual, uh, general fund for the town, not from borrowing. And that one is factored into the, um, the overall budget. Uh, but it's a, a one-time cost, so it's not on a specific line item in the budget. Um, article sixteen is to pave the senior center parking lot. Uh, this one is coming, if you look, if you're looking at the article, you can see the funding sources, uh, are a little split on this one. Uh, so this one is coming, part of the money from one of the articles that we had last year at town meeting, we approved an article to repair the roof of the senior center. Um, and thankfully we got a grant to pay for the costs of repairing, replacing the roof of the senior center. So the town did not have to pay that money. Uh, we're putting half of that money into stabilization, uh, is, as part of article three of the special town me, warrant. Uh, the other half and then money from, uh, funds created by the, the senior center for, through renting it out and through, um, the fees that are charged at the, at the senior center, uh, to repave the parking lot. For anyone that's been there, especially for events either at the senior center or things at the, at the new dog park, um, you'll know that the senior center parking lot can be rather treacherous at times. And, uh, we definitely don't want any of our town seniors to, uh, fall in a pothole or, or a frost heave. The, the winter fifteen did a, did a number on the, the parking lot there with all of the, the ice dams and frost heaves. And, uh, it's been, become more treacherous over the years and it's, it's really at a point where it needs to be replaced. So that's article sixteen. Uh, articles seventeen through twenty are all related to the treasurer collector's office and making changes to help the treasurer collector, um, work with people to, uh, pay their taxes even when there are, um, issues with them paying their taxes. And I don't know, Scott, if you want to go into some of the details on, on that.
Well, it, it really, it does. It makes it easier, uh, for the treasurer collector, um, especially if, if there's small amounts. Um, rather than to go into collection, they could be waived if it was a my, you know, a minute amount. Uh, but other, it also, um, gives the treasurer collector the ability to enter into payment agreements um, and payment plans that otherwise they're not able to do. So it really, it, it does make it easier, um, you know, to, to work things out with the taxpayers. If they, you know, something comes up and they fall behind.
It, essentially the way that they, the way that, uh, we've, the term, terminology that we have used to discuss them is that it provides more tools in the toolbox for the treasurer collector to work with the residents of the town to, to help, uh, both the residents and the town to, uh, receive money, but to not, uh, receive it in a way that, that brings the, the individual resident to, uh, a point where they're, uh, bankrupt or anything of that nature.
And if, if I could again, send a thank you and a shout out to our tax collector, treasurer corrector, Sonia Hodges.
Yes.
Who has been working very diligently with the town manager and town council to put forth these proposals that, uh, it would be a good thing for the town moving forward. So thank you for her work. Um, and we'll move on to article twenty-one.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Sonia, who certainly has done significant amount of work over, over the years to, to, help that office to do the best it can, the best work it can for the town and for the people of the town. Um, article twenty-one is an article for the Abington Cam, uh, enterprise fund. And the article initially was put in because it was believed that the wording of last year's article that created the enterprise fund for Abington Cam, uh, at the requirement of the state, uh, used the wrong, the wrong chapter and verse of, of state law to, or is it, Sean, is it state law or town law? State law?
State law.
Okay, wrong, uh, chapter and verse of state law to create the, the fund. Uh, through work with the, with town council, um, we found that, uh, the fund, the enterprise fund for Abington Cam is safe and covered the way that, the, the way that it was worded. And also it, once it's, uh, been voted on, it can't be touched again for another three years. So article twenty-one, we are recommending to pass over.
Right. On town council's advice, they basically said that last year's article, you do the job it was intended to do so that this article, which was submitted by petition, um, from residents, uh, will not be needed to cure any problem because he said everything is fine. And, uh, so the finance committee will be asking you to pass over, which is essentially means to not approve this article because it's not necessary. Then we have our last four articles.
Yes. And our last four articles are road approvals. And road approvals are something that, uh, we are not, uh, ready to do at this time. The board of selectmen has to have, uh, hearings with the, an appropriate amount of time given in preparation before the hearing. Uh, before the, the vote is made to approve the, to approve the roads. The, uh, board of selectmen has not had those yet because they were not sure about, uh, the rules regarding this town meeting and what, what articles we would be able to take up at town meeting. Uh, so the recommendation from the finance committee is to indefinitely postpone the approval of road, road articles to wait until such a time that we can have either a special town meeting that the board of selectmen has the appropriate hearings beforehand or next year's annual town meeting.
That's right. So this is the, uh, the second of the two consent agenda votes will be taking a vote on all four of the last articles, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five with one vote. As Matt said, to what, it's a phrase called indefinitely postpone, uh, because the, the procedure to approve a roadway involves a planning board vote and then a, uh, selectman public hearing and then a town meeting vote. And due to the coronavirus, uh, the selectmen are not able to host a public hearing. So we can't, uh, move forward with the town meeting vote. Hopefully sometime between now and the next town meeting, the selectmen will have a public hearing and we'll put it back on the next warrant. So that wraps up the twenty-five articles that are on the town meeting. As Matt said, most are pretty straightforward. Uh, if residents have questions that they want answered before town meeting, they can contact, uh, Scott Lamb, BAC or Matt Soller or myself. Or certainly bring your questions to town meeting, uh, which again will be Monday night, June twenty-second at seven o'clock at the Abington High School Auditorium. As you enter the high school parking area, uh, there'll be the, the parking lot on the right side of the school, which is, you'll see the turf fields next to them. Uh, that's where voters will be asked to park. If you do require some handicap, uh, ADA parking, we are going to reserve about ten or eleven spaces just outside the gym lobby entrance area. Um, if you see the police officer directing traffic out near the parking lot and you want to let him know that you're looking for an ADA space, there are some in that main parking lot and there are, as I mentioned, about ten or eleven available, a little bit closer to the doorway. If you want to get one of those ten or eleven spaces, you might want to get there early and then perhaps wait in your car until the school doors open at six-thirty. And again, please remember to wear your mask if you're attending town meeting. Uh, the board of health will be there with additional or extra masks if anyone needs one. Town elections are going to be the following day on the twenty-third, the Tuesday from eight AM to six PM, uh, at Emerald Hall on thirty Central Street. Um, that'll be, everyone votes there, all precincts are voting at, uh, the Emerald Hall on Tuesday, the twenty-third. And again, if you have questions, the town manager's phone number is seven, uh, sorry, seven eight one nine eight two twenty-one hundred. Town clerk Lee Ann Adams is seven eight one nine eight two twenty-one twelve. Or if you'd like to call me, my home number is seven eight one nine eight two four zero three four. Anything else you'd like to add, gentlemen?
No.
No.
I think that's it.
No, thank you, Sean.
I want to thank everyone for tuning in. I hope this is helpful to you and, uh, we look forward to seeing you at town meeting. We want to thank you in advance for your understanding and your compassion and cooperation. I also, before we sign off, want to send a thank you to our town employees, our DPW, our police, our EMTs and paramedics, firefighters who have, you know, essentially risked their health in order to protect our health and safety over these past many, uh, weeks. And also to our grocery store and retail workers who are out there on the front lines who we now recognize, I think all recognize that they play a more vital and undervalued role in our communities. And I hope that appreciation for those people will continue beyond this, this public health issue. And of course, to the many nurses and doctors and healthcare workers who live in our town of Abington. Uh, you're our healthcare heroes. We appreciate everything you do and we will try to keep you safe by following some of the guidelines. And Marty, I see you've rejoined us. I want to thank you for your guidance and the board of health. We're trying to get us through this and I think we will get through this. Um, I look forward to a very efficient and very safe town meeting. Do you, anything you want to add, Marty at the end here? Oh, I can't hear you, Marty. I don't know why.
Sorry about that. I said, uh, thank you. I think you summed it up nicely and we'll see everybody on, at town meeting. Um, please wear a mask and socially distance.
Alrighty. Thank you again. Tom, Andrew, Scott, Lamb, BAC, Matt Soller from the finance committee, Marty Go Lightly, and again, Kevin Tachi. Thank you very much. We'll see you on Monday night, June twenty-second of the town meeting at seven o'clock.
Thank you all. See you next week.
Take care. Thanks.